Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. I don't know what the heck happened this summer, but...
Go.
Yeah, I know, the 22nd. I hope the temperatures come back, that's for sure. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Marty Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
All right, we're all accounted for, present. First thing we have on our agenda is a public hearing for the DNR to conduct a wake study. This is in Elginak, and we're gonna need a motion to open that up.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the DNR to conduct a no-wake study? Support.
Okay, motion support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. This time at 7:02, I'll open up the public hearing for the... Wait, it is, let me back up, let me explain what happened. I was asked to go at a meeting, or be at a meeting with Elginak about three weeks ago. And truly, I didn't really have much of a clue what it was about. And in the meeting, there was three guys, I believe, from the DNR, the Lieutenant Reed, the Sheriff, Marine Patrol Officer, the guy that's in charge of the Marine Patrol, and two or three representatives from Elginak. And they were talking about the resolution that they just passed. They want of declaring no-wake from the city boat ramp crossing the Dairy Queen to the entrance of the Elginak Harbor Club. And they're in hopes of making that all no-wake. And so they wanted to know our feelings about it, and they wanted Clay to hopefully do the same thing. And I had questions, like I say, it was kinda just, first I was there, I read the resolution. Their resolution basically said all boats, all vessels. And I told them myself, and this is just me speaking personally, not for the board, that I would have a hard time, at the time, there was a guy in a 14-foot aluminum mural craft out there fishing. I said, "I would have a hard time telling him, he can't run up and down the river, he's been doing it for years." I myself would like to see it, boats under 26-foot, still maintain the 200-foot rule, myself personally. And anything, you know, and I felt that resolution, it should've been in that resolution, but they basically said all vessels. And then the other questions I had was if it was gonna be permanent, or if we're just doing this for a couple of years while we have high water, you know, what happens when the water goes back down? They said it was gonna be permanent. So, these were just questions I had there. And then, you know, I asked about, you know, Russell Island Ferry, he's gonna be no-wake. And the Wapala Island Ferry will be no-wake on the American side. So, and if they actually had discussions with that, you know, they, you know, there wasn't any clear-cut answers, truthfully. But that was just points I brought up. We did have an informal discussion on the island at our last meeting two weeks ago. How many people were there, 29? 27 people got up and spoke. And they all pretty much, all but one, there was one guy that said he wanted no-wake. The sentiment then was enforce the rules that we have, the 200-600-foot rule. That was the sentiment at that meeting, so. And it was pretty clear, and I think everybody in this room will agree, we need more enforcement on our waters. Yeah. And we don't need less, that's for sure. So that is an issue, and for the record, too, I myself, I'm assuming that we are gonna have just as high, if not higher, water next year. With all the rain that we've been getting it, I mean, everyone out here knows, normally, we would've probably dropped six, eight inches from our spring levels, and we haven't. It's right where we were this spring, if not maybe even a little higher after today's rain, you know? So, I'm assuming it's gonna be just as bad, if not worse, next year. And I'm already going to be talking to the county about getting more enforcement out here. I'm not gonna wait and start that conversation in, you know, April or March. I'm gonna start that conversation right now for next year. So, with that being said, any public comments about doing a resolution for no-wake in the Elginak area? Okay, no public comments? Come on up. Just state your name and address, and tell us what you think. Yeah, please.
My name is Ray Kuphor. My address is 501 Latre, Elginak, Michigan. I just, I had a home last year in your Clay Township area, on Anchor Bay Drive, I sold it in September. And I bought a, sold that in September, I bought it with this home in May. Bought it because it's out on the North Channel. I bought it because I like to watch boats fly by. So, I understand the water level's high, but I agree with your statement. Let's enforce the laws that we already have. I'm not for the no-wake zone.
Okay.
At least not in front of my property. Nor, I'll let my neighbors speak for themselves, are any of us. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Yep, come on up.
Paul Picola, 5470 Middle Channel Drive. I'm assuming everybody wants this no-wake thing to save property and docks, things of that nature. I think if they enforce the rules that are already out there, they'll get their result. I mean, there's nobody out there, we go to Russell Island once or twice a week. You see boats flying by all day long. Nobody slows down for it, you know? They enforce it, I think they'll get their result, hopefully.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Joe Vance, 7237 Blue Bull. I'm not for this no-wake zone stuff either. I think what we need to do is just enforce the laws that we have in existence. I think Marty, at the last meeting, you said something about how the tickets, the sheriff had written out there, or not tickets, but stops, and how many tickets were given out. I think they make a stop, they ought to have reason for that. They ought to write a ticket, follow up the warnings. You pass out enough tickets, and that gets by, gets word of mouth, gets around, you know? They go back to their act clubs or whatever and say, "Hey, watch it on the North Channel over here because I got a ticket." Just enforce the rules we got, and leave everything else to law.
Right. Thank you.
My name is Dale Sterling, I live at 9427 Island Drive. Yesterday, I drove up to the one buoy, and took a picture of my clock and the buoy, drove no-wake to the next buoy, took a picture of that, 22 minutes. Now, from my marina right here, to my friend's house on the other side of Elginak, I can make it in six to seven minutes, one buoy.
Right.
And when you add that, and to go to AJ's, that'll be a 40-minute trip each way.
How big's your boat?
It's a 26-foot.
Okay. Yep.
But now, when I go through the snot, that's all I'm awake, so I can't even use the snot because to go through the whole thing. For my boat, it's all no-wake, except for, I notice when I'm going there to the Baltimore Cut, there's 30-footers, all of them hit the no-wake buoy, they take off, every one of them. There's just a blue area. If they give no-wake to there, that's a wide area. And if they get a no-wake there, all these people with the docks and everywhere, would want one, they deserve one. I'd report them for every restaurant, so he can park the boats at the restaurant, not have waves. And I observed all the seawalls, one seawall was this far from the water, out of 38 houses, and the rest of them were all sufficient. Yesterday was really windy out there. And the waves that were there, that knocked them boats, were bigger than the boat waves. And the boats that did go by me up on the plain, I, were in the middle, just pretty wide. They were in the middle, and the waves dissipated before they got to my seawalls. And that was what I observed yesterday, what I did it purposely for that, for this meeting.
Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mark Burchard, 739 North Channel Drive. I'm not in favor of the no-wake either, but something's gotta be done. I got permitted from a hoist with the DNR and the DEQ. So right now, I can't put my boat there because it would just take a beating trying to keep it there, so I have to keep it out of marina. So I have this beautiful home, I can't keep my boat there because it's not enforced.
Right.
There was a boat that came by on Sunday, it had to be a 52-footer. It couldn't have been 150 feet off the shore, and it threw a weight that came up over the seawall, onto the road. I mean, it's, the property is just getting washed away there if we continue doing it.
Yeah, he lives north of the boys' club.
Yep. Just on the side of the cut.
Yeah, just so they know.
When they come onto that cut, they just jump on it, and they just go, and the wake is just ridiculous. I don't want a no-wake zone, but nobody's ever enforced it.
Right.
I mean, you don't have to have brains to know what you're doing by a boat. A lot of these people obviously don't have a brain or know what the laws are, because it's not very wide right there on that.
Right. Thank you, good seeing you.
Thanks, Mark.
Come on up.
Welcome, 212 Edgewater. I'm in Elginak, which really isn't my meeting, but I do...
That's okay, we welcome you anyhow.
Yeah, I'm right across from Russell, so by the time the waves kind of get over there, they've got nice grass in front of them. But I do agree that you need to have it enforced. I know people know if their boat is over 26 feet. And Sunday, there was none on the water, but everybody over 26 feet. They don't know what 200 feet from shore is. At our point, we're on that, it's only 1,100, 1,200 feet across to begin with.
Right.
So we have an issue with the fact that the 200-600 is gonna be a problem. Anything under 26 feet, 200 feet, not a problem, I agree. Yes, some boats will go all week, still, both of them, and a lot of fishermen, they're just floating down. But I got these big ones, and, you know, especially now this time of year, everybody's coming back.
Coming back.
Everybody's coming back for putting a wake. And they like to, if they're going north, when they make that turn past the harbor, somehow, I don't know how you guys think, it doesn't bother you, but they cut that corner sharp and stay right along the...
They cut it short.
The west shore there, and of course, Russell doesn't fly time waves with there, because they're 200 from us, not the other side. Going down the river, they come out of St. Clair River, and once again, they kind of cut, you know? I don't know, I think they race car drivers. They're in a hurry, and, you know, shore's always straight line. So they're cutting close to the west side bank there, which is Elginak, which is Neyland, and that's where we're getting it. I've only been here this second season. Last summer, I was up north golfing, and I checked in. And a wife's sitting there with a police officer, filing a report because our dock was destroyed by about three or four big cruisers that had gone by. She wasn't used to this, and was literally lifted up and busted up. And I got a sea ray there, and this summer, I think he's toying me with all the neighbors, just going up and down purposely close. And I think I'll give him the bill the next time, but anyway, so I agree that, yeah. The number one, the minimum needs to be done is enforcement.
Right. All right, thank you. So you weren't, you're not in favor of the no-wake, or are you? You want to see enforcement?
I would like to see the enforcement at minimum, but no-wake, I agree with your statements, is kind of tough.
Right.
I've been coming up here since I was a kid, I grew up on South Channel. It's gonna be tough, but I do know one thing about boaters, yes, word does get out. And if we can get it on the charts, you know, then they tend to fail also. And, you know, it, that's a long process to do.
Right.
But in the meantime, the minimum is to do enforcement. The rules are already there. It's just that somehow, nobody's out there, and the enforcement is what seems to be the big issue. Well, who's supposed to do it? And how often, whether, I can go by deckers any time of the day, and I don't have a problem.
Right.
And they're a little wider apart than we are. So I don't think we're, a lot of the people, and I will stretch there, is asking for anything unreasonable. But yes, it has to start with a little bit more enforcement. We have two buoys out there now that mark no-wake, and people blast right by. Now, how do you do that? So that means if, when you're driving down the road, you blast right through the traffic light, dump air, you know, with the flash and yellow, you know, I don't understand. And like you said earlier, it doesn't take rocket science to win a boat, and you still have rules.
Yep.
Some of these people, 22 minutes, well, really, are you that big of a hurry? I don't understand why you're underwater, if you're trying, if you are, go by and offshore. You don't throw as big a weight, and you can go a lot faster.
Yeah.
So, that's all.
Hour a minute and gas. Thanks, Larry.
I'm gonna add something to, Deckers was landing, was mentioned, and I lived on Blue Bull. On my channel, I was right there at Deckers.
Right.
And on the weekends, get from there across to the snot.
It's like playing poker.
Yeah. I mean, the boats and the jet skis, like crazy.
It's horrible.
If I was a cop and just kind of slid in between some docks down there, I could ride cruisers all day long. Long as you're being wise.
Thank you.
Gordon Rick, I'm on Lake River, one of the neighbors, 503 Lake River. We do have a problem with what you mentioned, boats close, that got bothering us. So be it, I mean, we, first of all, we're in favor of better enforcement.
Yeah.
But if you thought of the economic consequences, that, you're talking about marinas, restaurants, summer jobs for kids. I'm not sure a no-wake is gonna help you. And 22 minutes, both ways, that's 44 minutes. So you go to a restaurant down the, down the channel and come back, then you may as well hop in a car and go somewhere else. Or, how about property values? We just bought it. I'm not saying I wouldn't have bought one if there was a no-wake, but I'm not saying I wouldn't either. I might, maybe I would've gone further north, maybe I'd have gone toward New Baltimore. I'm retired, I can go anywhere I want. So, I'm definitely against a permanent no-wake.
Yeah.
If the water gets to a level where common sense tells you, hey, we need a no-wake here this year, or the next year, whatever, I don't really have a problem with that, but a permanent no-wake makes no sense to me at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
Hi. Captain Bernie Shag, 246 North Russell, Russell Island. Owner-operator of North Channel Transport, better known as the Russell Island Ferry Service. Everybody has concerns, and one thing I haven't heard is about the safety issues. People's safety. On my vessel, I hold up to 49 passengers, any rate of from infants to 100 years old. Saturdays and Sundays, we all know how it is out there. The issue isn't in the small fishing vessels or the offshore race boats. It's the big, huge cruisers that are just plowing water up and down, that don't pay attention to the no-wake buoys that are out there. Or they just don't see them, they're too small. They're not marked because of the issues that we all know already. But they just don't pay attention. I'm out there every day, and the craziness that goes on out there, and especially on the weekends, I've got to come in there, you know, under so much power. That boat is 42 feet with 48 passengers onboard, it's rocking and rolling. There's a safety issue there. They're spiraling around me, I try to hail them on the radio, they're telling me off, you know, flipping me off. I'm probably doing the same, but anyways. It's a big safety issue for islanders over there, and that's...
So what would you like to, would you like to see it all no-wake, or just better enforcement?
I would like to see it all no-wake.
Right.
I have a 16-foot fishing vessel.
Yeah.
I'm also an Elginak resident, also.
You want better, better enforcement than existing?
Better enforcement of the rules that already exist.
Okay.
The 200-600 foot. Even with the 600 feet, as far as I know, that channel is a little over 1,200, a little over 1,200.
It's about 1,300.
They have to be right directly in the middle, and if somebody's coming at each other, they're bearing off, now they're outside of that 600-foot rule. So yes, definitely more enforcement.
Okay.
And I know that's an issue, too, with the money thing.
All right, thanks for, thanks for coming.
Is the, is the no-wake rule, is that right now?
No, there's not a no-wake rule now, the rule that's in effect is the 200-600-foot rule.
Which is why everybody's ignoring them.
And that's why, they got a couple buoys out there, but there's no juice behind it. So, and that's an issue, too. So. Any other public comments?
I guess I have more questions than, and I know nobody here is gonna be able to answer them, but...
Can I get your, your name, please?
Joel Drum. 5149 Point Drive East China, and 7248 Aqua Isle.
Thank you.
How did everybody here first learn about the 200-600 foot law?
It's been a law for...
I didn't ask that, I asked, when did you hear about it? How did you learn about it?
Oh, I've known it since I was 12 years old.
On the charts, you take a boat...
It's on the charts, it's...
So, if we have no signage in the county, and we have residents, we have people that are visiting us from other counties, from other states, how would they know that we have no-wake zone?
It's international, it's on the charts.
It's for, it's the whole St. Clair, that rules for the whole St. Clair River.
No, I understand that.
But, but I...
But you come in, you come in from Lake St. Clair.
Right.
You come in either from South Channel...
We gotta stay on task here, you're, you're talking about signage and education...
Everybody here is asking about enforcing something that majority of people out there have no clue about.
Right.
That's their fault.
We have no signage.
Don't find out about it.
So, so we have no signage, this is a big problem, right? If you guys want to keep, keep or stay with...
Right, I agree with you.
Or if you want to go with the absolute no-wake zone there, right? Regardless of what you do, you need to put signage. You need to come up with money for that. I mean, if we go back to the 200-600 thing, I've heard people bring up in here, is it gonna be a permanent thing? Well, the 200-600 foot law...
The 200-600 is, if it was no...
The 200-600 foot law is a permanent law.
Right.
But why did it first come about? The came about in 1986 because of high water. So why, when I lowered my boat hoist down, and I came with my boat off the hoist, why is the 200-600 foot still in effect, in years in the past? That's a question. Responsible for your waves. Everybody's still responsible for the wave, regardless of if you have a 200-600. If you're 1,000 feet offshore, and you make a wave and it comes in and destroys stuff, the 200-600 foot law doesn't mean anything, because you're still responsible for your waves.
Right.
All right? As far as, you know, one gentleman here said, you have to put a boat hoist there. Put always, put pilings in, you know, secure the vessel with the correct wave, and you can live in an area with big waves. I live on the Northern River, where we've got greater waves that come through there all the time. Got the big cruiser waves that come through all the time. Boats can be secured. As far as the no-wake buoys go, I think, you know, we should have buoys, then you should have signage.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking reference to the gentleman's comment about putting the island system up in the security code. I plan on doing that, but it's a process through the DEQ and the DNR to do that. In the meantime, I can't put my boat there.
Until he gets her permits.
Until I get my permit.
Right. And then someone to put it in.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah. Two-hour wait, or two-year wait for that. Any more public comments? For the no-wake? No? And I just want to make, and how this process worked, Elginak already did it. And what they did, they basically sent a resolution to the DNR, I don't know if it's been explained here or not. They sent a resolution to the DNR to ask them to do a study to, because it's a, it would be a DNR rule, to actually make it no-wake. They asked us to do the same, I don't know if it's a board decision, we're gonna come to it here real soon. But then, the DNR will actually do some kind of a study on it, or, you know, think about it. And they're, they're gonna have another public hearing, you know, at some point down the road. And I told them that, that'll probably be a pretty good size, we'll probably get the auditorium at the school to do that. You know, we might have a couple hundred people there. Quite frankly, I know if that happens, we'll probably have some marinas up in Port Huron, and some marinas in, over in St. Clair shores attend it, too. Because, you know, you know, they, they have economic stakes in it also. But that's the process, so the DNR will, will look at it, have public hearings, and then they will come to a conclusion on it, so. Yeah. So...
How much influence do you have on the DNR report?
How much influence do I have on the DNR? I don't think a whole lot, I mean, they, they will come down here and analyze it, take a look at it, look at the shoreline and everything, and the water levels. You know, like I say, personally, I, we have high water, and we all know that. It's, it's a temporary thing, it's not permanent, okay? Yeah, we might have it for another year or two, the water's gonna go back down, just like the stock market. That's the way it works, and it, so, yeah, it's, you know, and they'll take all that into account. And like I say, they, they will have another public hearing, so.
I wasn't specifically invited to that Elginak meeting, but I did watch it today. And I believe what they had said was, the issue that Elginak has with their request right now is an enforcement issue. Like, they don't already have an enforcement issue. But they would have a hard time enforcing the complete no-wake without the support of Clay Township, because we're on the other side of that. So, I think they feel that they would have a little bit more traction if we were in agreement with it. So I guess we'll, we'll see later on.
And I know cities jurisdiction goes out, township stops at the seawall. City actually has some jurisdiction that goes past the seawall. They have a little bit more, more juice than township does out, out there. So, yeah. So, all right, no more public comments? Can you on...
I'm glad if you're any gentleman back there that said that there's no signage in...
Right, there's no, we do have a signage issue.
It's not on the charts.
Well, yeah, it's on the Coast Guard charts. But I know...
Charts that we go buy at West Marine and stuff, it's not?
It might not, well, on the Coast Guard charts it is, I know, but...
The ones we have is the maps we put up, hopefully.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of publications with, with the red, you know, color-coded, where...
Successes to people who live around here.
Well, I know they try to put them out in St. Clair shores and the marinas and stuff.
They're on the county websites.
Yeah, county websites, on our websites, but...
At this point, the signs, that might be a good idea, and why do we have to pay for the DNR to cover that?
Well, we'll get to that, I'll make a comment on that when we, the board talks about it. Okay? You want to come on? talks about it. Okay? You wanna come on up or...
Just quick. Who's in charge of the enforcement? Is it the sheriff department?
The, the, yes, the, the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule is called a local watercraft rule ordinance. And it's a county ordinance. County is, uh, uh, actually, and I got this from the DNR, the county is a hundred percent responsible for the enforcement and signage. So, uh, and just, well, I'll just tell you now. In fact, I, I've had several conversations with the county and I had, uh, one today with our, uh, our local, um, county commissioner. I said, you know, county has six-hundred, sixty million dollar budget. You can find, you know, fifty, sixty grand to help us out here for a year or two somewhere. And, um, it, it, it actually falls under the realm of the sheriff and the sheriff has a twenty million dollar budget. And he basically spends that twenty million dollars as he sees fit. So, I'll be talking with the sheriff too, um, about, uh, you know, trying to get, like I say, more enforcement and, and better enforcement while, while they're out there. Uh, there's, needless to say, there's a, a lot, there's a lot of room for improvement.
When is that sheriff up for reelection?
Every two years.
Every four years?
No, sheriff, I think it's two years. I think, is he four? Okay.
When's he up?
Be, uh...
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty. Yep. So...
Sheriff Donlin.
Yep. So, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing regarding the DNR wake study.
Support.
At seven-thirty.
Okay. Motion of support. Any discussion? All in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is, don't you guys wanna see what we're gonna do?
Hey!
Hey, I, I did wanna mention before everyone leaves, with this high water, and I, I don't care if you live in Elginac or wherever, um, but, uh, you know, you, you gotta try to protect your property as best you can. And if anyone needs sandbags, we have sandbags free. And, uh, get ahold of our water department. We'll distribute them, you know, give them to you. Uh, I don't care if you live in Elginac, Ira, or, or wherever. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get them, you know, you can pick them up and, uh, uh, but you gotta fill them with sand. You know, I, I had so, I had someone call me.
We saw twenty-one of them before.
I...
They were all forty until that.
Yeah. I, I had someone call me and they said, well, already, I can only take two or three at a time in my trunk in my car. It's no, I understand. So, okay?
High water or low water? It's still a safety issue.
Right. Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
So, two-hundred, six-hundred. Spread the word. Yeah. All right. Uh, bills payable. Oh, no.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add new business number four. Um, police department vest purchase.
Okay. We have motion to amend the agenda to buy some police vests.
Support.
Support.
We have lots of support. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have bills payable.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Support.
Okay. Motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Beshard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any more public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along. Uh, we have the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of August twenty-first and synopsis, check reports, the September Parks and Rec updates, road watch, and request from Parks and Rec for preferred charter for five-hundred-and-ninety dollars to be reimbursed, um, through payment on the charter, which I believe is all but two seats filled. So, they pretty much already recouped it.
Support.
Okay. Motion of support. Everyone good with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor, the consent agenda is presented. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have supervisor's report. Um, I don't know if anyone noticed, but a week ago last Friday, uh, we lit the light on top of the colony tower. And, um, it's a, it's a ten-mile light and three-sixty. So, that job got done. Uh, it did get put off a while. There had some, a couple parts backordered, but we got it in there. Um, and about, actually about a week and a half ago, I know, Joanne, you weren't here, but we got another big, big rain. And the culverts across M-29 that we had problems flooding, the three culverts, they, they worked. They still need to be replaced. We're gonna stay on them, but, uh, the M-Dog came and they flushed them out. And, uh, I think there's still old clay culverts underneath there. And they, they, in fact, over here, we're watching it really close. After we cleaned it out, there's a little dip in the road. So, it's, you know, on M-29. Just the other side of our sign on the, on the water side, you can see it. And we're watching that daily. Hopefully it will...
Won't collapse.
Yeah, it won't collapse on us. But, uh, um, and also, we did have a, a, a road issue. Actually, right before the meeting, um, had a, a garbage truck hit, um, getting off the ferry there, loaded real heavy, uh, Labor Day garbage. And, uh, they, they hit the saddle tank, or their fuel tank, and they spread diesel fuel from the ferry all the way to Elginac to their, um, to their, uh, their wa, their DNR, or the DNR, their, their DPW spot.
I saw that. I...
And I, yeah, I...
Late getting the garbage on the island. I thought something must have happened.
Right. Well, I, well, it just happened about four, fourth, four o'clock.
Yeah. I was wondering what that was about.
Yeah, I saw it. I called the county road and they came and put sand on the road. We put some, uh, little bit of dry, you know, the stuff that absorbs it over by the, underneath the light because it was pretty slippery. Um, let's see. We, uh, did our last concert in the, or music in the park. Uh, we had the concert over in Brownsville. It worked out really well. Uh, they featured, uh, Ten Beach Drive. Uh, the residents loved it. And, you know, we're gonna be looking for more options, uh, going forward to having more concerts over there. And I just wanna let everybody know too, that the, um, I, I don't have the full report yet, but I know, uh, the budget for the music in the park was totally in the black. Uh, I think, uh, you know, we spent about a hundred, a hundred bucks less than the sponsorship. So, it's a great program. It doesn't cost us anything. Uh, and, you know, we're, we're gonna be looking at amping it up for next year. I did get a quote for Wi-Fi in the park and I personally thought it was too much money. It was fourteen thousand. Uh, I'm gonna seek a couple other quotes and, uh, you know, I'm thinking if it was, you know, considerably a lot less, maybe we can go ahead and just pull the trigger. You know, we really didn't budget it for this year, but a couple people mentioned it to me. So, did some research and, uh, it would be nice to get some Wi-Fi over there for, you know, better security cameras and, and that sort of thing. And I think the residents would like it, but fourteen, that's a little, my personal feeling.
We get Wi-Fi in here?
Huh?
We get Wi-Fi in here?
Yeah, we got it. Um, and we did get most of the kitchen equipment delivered for the concession stand. I'm working on getting that in place and getting that, uh, the health department approval. So, we can get that, uh, going for a little bit, just to iron out the bugs. So, we'll be going full blast next year with our concession stand in the park. And, uh, with the help of Chris O'Regan, we're, uh, we're getting really aggressive, uh, with the dangerous buildings. We're, we got about probably eight or ten of them we're gonna be taking down. I did talk to the chief on, or I was going to have mentioned it. There's one of them I think we could do a burn on. Um, and, uh, I'll get with you on, on that. So, we could do a practice burn on. But, uh, yeah, we're gonna, we're working on that pretty aggressively. Um, upcoming events this Sunday, and there's only two seats left. We, we put this together pretty quick. We got a good deal on, uh, some Lions tickets for the opening game, Lions, uh, Cardinals. And, uh, we have a, a school bus motor coach leaving the high school at eleven o'clock sharp. Rumor has it, there's gonna be a little tailgate festivity beforehand, a little bit maybe. But, uh, I, I, that's not sanctioned and I don't know anything about it. Just a rumor. But, uh, we have two seats left, uh, sixty-two dollars per person. And you can't, it's hard to get a, these are pretty decent seats. It's hard to even get a seat in, at Ford Field for sixty-two bucks. And this includes your bus ride over and back. Um, we're continuing our consumer education series on Harrison's Island at the Reader's Cove Tuesday, September nineteenth, where the topic is in-home care and senior residence scams. So, you get representatives from the seniors, uh, from the attorney general comes and that's the topic. I think we have six of them in total. I believe we got one more after this. We have a new event, September sixteenth in the park, Safety Tykes, we're calling it. The stem-doff of, we did the Safety Town at, uh, in, uh, the, um, Agonquin, was it Agonquin or Millside? Millside.
Okay.
Agonquin, uh, school. And it went over tremendously. And, uh, and that was for the kids from kindergarten up to like third, fourth grade. Went great. And, uh, we thought we'd do some for, uh, the little guys. And, um, so, September sixteenth from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty. And we can extend that if we have to with the, if we get a lot of people. We have the Paw Patrol characters coming. Little kids love these guys. I don't know. I, I wouldn't know if they were sitting...
Oh, you'd know.
Yeah, would I? Okay. But, uh, they're gonna be here. Our fire department, our police department's gonna be here. And it's basically education for the little guys, get them comfortable, you know, the police and firemen, you know, they're our friends, not, you know. And, uh, also, we're gonna have Roscoe the Clown. And, uh, it's, uh, free for all and, uh, sponsored by Nickel and Saf Insurance. So, that again, doesn't cost us anything. Uh, getting ready to start our Hath, is it Hatha yoga?
Hath.
Our yoga class. We got six weeks, uh, cla, six-week yoga class starting September nineteenth. Uh, I believe that's Tuesday, six-thirty to seven-thirty at Millside Elementary. It's forty-two dollars a person for the whole six weeks. If you just wanna drop in on a class, it's ten bucks. And also, we have the Zuma Fitness, uh, class starting, uh, at the, at Millside Elementary. And that's September twentieth it starts, the next day. I believe that's Wednesday. Six-thirty to seven-thirty at the Millside Elementary. Again, that costs us forty-two dollars for the six weeks per person. If you drop in, it's ten bucks. And the Zuma class includes salsa, meringue, cha-cha, hip-hop, and belly dancing. I can tell we have some takers.
There's some energy.
We have some takers on the belly dancing. Okay. And, uh, we're really getting geared up for our second annual Scarecrow Festival, October twenty-eighth. Uh, this is, uh, gonna become a large event. We're already getting sponsors lined up for it. And the DDA stepped in to, uh, make this a, a reality. Uh, we're gonna have a scarecrow contest where people, businesses, individuals, uh, service organizations, and, uh, first responders. We got four classes. Can make a scarecrow and, and we'll vote on who has the best scarecrow. There's cash prizes.
Public service, not first responders.
Okay. Public service. That's right. So, our water department could do one, couldn't they?
Yes.
Um, then we're, we're doing, uh, something that was really popular last year is make your own scarecrow. We'll have, we're, we're getting a bunch of old clothes. If anyone has old, tattered clothes, the older the better. Drop them off. Uh, we're gonna have all the stuff for people to make their own scarecrows, the straw and everything. And, uh, I know last year we made about seventy-five of them. And, you know, we're getting geared up to do about a hundred and fifty this year. Uh, kids make their own scarecrow and you take it home with you. It's a lot of fun and it, it really was pretty cool. Uh, we got that going on. Uh, we got all kinds of kids games going on there for it. Uh, we have a pet dress-up contest. You're gonna help with that, right? We have an interactive DJ that does all kinds of kids games and everything and a lot more. I think we have the Macomb County Kids Scrap and it's a, it's a mobile, it's a mobile, like a big RV.
Arts and scraps.
Arts and scraps. Thank you. That's coming. And, um, so, uh, I know last year, we probably had about a hundred and fifty kids there and, uh, went over great. I'm hoping to double that this year. So, if you're on Facebook, what you can do is like us at Clay Township Parks and Rec and all this stuff and more's on it. And, um, or any, any, uh, questions, you can contact, uh, call the office here. Cindy Babish is our Parks and Rec coordinator that sets all this up. So, that concludes my supervisor's report. That wasn't so bad, was it?
No.
Come on, you were in there long. You know, everyone complains.
I missed it. I missed it.
Okay, you missed it. I appreciate. So, okay. Next, we have our fire chief's report. Chief?
Good evening. Uh, for the month of, uh, August, uh, police chief and I finished, uh, coordinate, coordinating our action plan with the other agencies on, uh, raft off and location of our staging area, which was located on South Channel. Thanks to Mr. Sharkier for these, this property. Fire department responded to nineteen, uh, calls during raft off, uh, which consists of abrasions, cuts, hypothermia, intoxication. People lost and left behind and disabled. Over, over, out of that nineteen, tri-hospital transported five patients. Raft off was much larger this year. It was seven miles around compared to last time. This year was seven miles around compared to last year, which was five miles around. So, it was bigger. And it was from South Channel all the way to Middle Channel. I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Bob Bryson for the use of the park, Tri EMS, Mr. Cummings, and Trish May and their staff for their assistance, the Elginac Fire Department for the, and their personnel, Clay Dispatch, and the Clay Township Fire Department personnel for their hard work. During the month, the Fire Department assisted the Port Huron Fire Department for lockdown. We sent two personnel with our personal watercraft up there to assist in that. St. Clair County Emergency Management brought down their, uh, Safety Town program to Elginac Elementary School. Fire Department participated with other agencies. We did a fire safety program thanks to, uh, Fire Department, Logan Page, and Mike Hope. Uh, the new bunkers came in. We issued those. Everybody is very pleased with those. I do have them in my truck. If you folks would like to see them after that meeting, I'll show you them. We did have to send some moose back because they were manufactured last year. They have a ten-year shelf life on them. So, they already had a year on them. So, we're not gonna take that yet. So, I called the company and they took them back and ceremony to issue us.
Perfect.
I am working on the replacement of our SCBA's. I have two companies that are offering low interest rates. Uh, when I get the, uh, backs from them and the figures, I will present it to you at the next court.
This is Scott Pax.
Scott Pax. Uh, after that, uh, purchase, we're gonna have to look at purchasing some new vehicles. I'm waiting for Michigan, uh, Michigan Fire apparatus. They did do a evaluation and trucks be writing me up a report. So, we'll be, uh, by which trucks are the worst to the, to the, to the, basically to the worst. And then, uh, St. Clair County Management, I should say, St. Clair County Waste Management, the top supervisor of work, she's going to share purchase designs for the hazardous waste drop-on. One's gonna be by appointment only and the other one is we do not accept plate testing. Also, to let you know that the ISO Insurance Service Office will be stopping by in our conference over I S O.
Good job, chief.
Thanks, chief.
So, now what do we do with latex paint?
Well, you can, it's not hazardous material. But just so everyone knows, if you have latex paint, if you, all you have to do is dry it out. Put cat, if you got a half gallon, fill it up with sand or cat litter, let it dry. And you can throw it out with your regular garbage.
All right. So, they do take it as long as it's been remediated?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. Let's just dry it.
Yep. So...
They don't, they don't want any type of liquid in.
Sure.
Right. Cause then it'll run out back of their truck.
Yep. Make sure the lids aren't on.
Yeah.
Chief, do you know when it was the last time we had an inspection for the ISO?
Uh, the last one I've had was four years ago. Is that probably your turn?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next on our... Next on our unfinished business, we have the resolution on the garbage and refuge. We have a representative from Antara Cummings, but he's at the, he's number two, he's second on the agenda at the Elginac meeting, and he's gonna come right for here, so I would like to postpone that till after new business. We'll come back to unfinished business, if that's okay with the board. And we'll go ahead and move right into new business. First thing we have is DPW pump replacement, um, for the Flamingo Station. John, you wanna?
Uh, our number-one pump on our Flamingo Station failed. Sent that out to Kennedy Pump for refurbishment, and I'll note the parts are no longer available. So they gave us a quote for a new pump, and you have that before you tonight, and what I'm asking to do is just replace the pump.
There really isn't too many suppliers, are there? I mean.
Um, there's two distributors, but they all come from the same place, yes.
Okay. In other words, we can't go out and really shop it aggressively. Um, does the old pump have any value? Scrap?
Scrap.
How old was it?
Um, the pump was nineteen-seventy-nine.
Okay, so it's been there a minute.
They put new seals in it in the nineties, and here's where it now is.
Yeah, we do have ten thousand dollars in this line item, we, we pretty much kinda figure this happens once a year at least, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the DPW Flamingo pump replacement for six thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, coming from line five-nine-zero-zero-zero-nine-three-zero-point-zero-zero.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thanks, John. All right, next we have, um, we have some engineering fees. I'm not sure if people are really aware. Um, Colony, the big one, Colony Road, it's, um, it's on a private water system. They, in other words, uh, soon as the water leaves, M-twenty-nine goes down to Colony, it's on, it's on their own system. And they're having issues in the backside, or the, along the north channel part of the Colony Road, they, they have bad water pressure, they have, um, rusty water, thank you. Uh, and, what do they have, a two, two-inch line back there?
Three.
Three-inch line, and it's very, very, very old. Is it cast iron?
Cast iron, nineteen-twenty-two.
Put in nineteen-twenty-two. So, we've, uh, we've gotten estimates and quotes on how much it would cost to upgrade this, and that's what this engineering is for. Basically, what we're looking at doing is going under the canal from Flamingo, tying in and running a main along the north channel side of Colony Road, tying in where, as you go down Colony and you hit the water, there's that turn, ninety-degree turn. The line from M-twenty-nine to there, it's okay, it's sufficient, but we tie into there, and from that point back to M-twenty-nine, to bring it up to standard, we'd have to install five fire hydrants down there. So we got estimates on it, there, we gave it to their board, they're going to go around and get petitions signed for a special assessment, um, for their property owners to actually do that. DEQ is very, very much in favor of it. Did we ever get a letter from them?
We did.
Okay. All right, give me a copy of that when you get a chance. Basically requesting them to do this. Um, it was about a two-million-dollar project, so it'll be about a two-million-dollar project. But this is the engineering costs, and one, if they do decide to go ahead and approve this, they will, this will get tied into their special assessment. But I just wanted to put it before you to go ahead and pay these engineering costs for, for this, and we also have ten thousand dollars in this buck line item.
I'll make a motion to, you, you, you're gonna do these both all separate?
No, let's do them together.
Don't, yeah, I put a total there for them.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the project engineering fees and the, for the Colony, Colony water main replacement, and also the Bedore water main replacement, um, for a, out of line item five-nine-one-point-zero-zero-zero-point-eight-oh-seven-point-zero-zero, and for a total of two thousand seventy dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion? And just so people knows, uh, you know, we, we looked at extending it on Harson's Island on Bedore. I think that estimate was about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, and for eight people, it's really not cost-effective. I think we figured out it'd be about seventy thousand dollars per home, uh, just to get the water out in front of them, and that, that one's not gonna fly. But they asked for the study, and we, you know, we, we did it, so. Okay, we have motion of support, any more discussion?
How many people live in Colony?
How many people are?
Uh, there's about two hundred accounts.
Yeah, two hundred accounts. And right now, what we do, we, we just have one meter at the road, and we send the co, the association a bill. Is that right, John?
Yes.
And they pay us, not, and this will, we'll have individual water meters at everyone's house, and.
Two hundred more meters, true.
Yep.
And, and that's filtered into the sewer charge?
The water.
Water, sewer charge.
Right, and, and, I tell you, it'll, it'll be a benefit to our whole system, too, 'cause it'll be nice, we'll have a loop down there.
That's the other question I was gonna ask, we're gonna make a.
Yeah. 'Cause we're tying in with Flamingo.
Okay.
And when you have a loop on a water system like that, that's a lot better than just having a dead end, so, right? So, um, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? The motion carries. Uh, next we have the resolution before us, um, for, uh, requesting Michigan Department and National Resources Law Enforcement to do a water cra, uh, uh, a study on having no-wake area in Elginac from the city boat ramp, which is cross-street from the DEQ, Dairy Queen, to the entrance of Elginac Harbor Club. And we did have our, our public hearing tonight. I think everybody was not for it, just enforced, uh.
The existing laws?
Yes.
Yeah, there was some requests for some signage.
Yep.
But let's get the motion on the table, and then let's open it up.
Okay. I make a motion that we reject the resolution.
Support.
Of the no-wake. We have motion and support.
To reject.
To reject. So if you don't want to, you vote yes, when it comes down to that, so. I'm opening it up for discussion.
The, the DNR no-wake study, was that just going to be a simple yes or no? Or was it going to be recommendations into that study? Does anybody know?
They, they were gonna take recommendations from the public, and, and, and of course, from us and Elginac municipalities, um, and come up with their own, their own determination. I'm not sure exactly what they, they do to come up with a answer, but that's basically what it would be, we'd be asking them to do a, and that's what Elginac did, to do a study to make it all no-wake.
Well, if we, they're already doing a study, why would we want to do it?
Well, they wanted us to buy into it, just for, it'd be a little easier to, they, they said to.
The DNR may not do the study if we don't buy into it. I don't know.
Well, I think they will.
Correct. They could do it even if we don't.
Yeah.
And they could, yeah.
Yeah, they, they probably will.
I would have much rather have seen a resolution to request the DNR, the sheriff, or the other law enforcement agencies to enforce the current.
That will, that will be coming. That will be coming.
Well, I think the other issue, too, is, and a few of us had hit on that at the conversation on the island meeting, um, that you're also just creating another problem, because that's where everybody's going to be stopping, that's where everybody's going to be starting to get on a plane, and you're just creating a worse area, right there at either end of that no-wake area.
Right, we, to expand on that, basically what it is, okay, I know I'm gonna have to go slow in the next quarter mile, so I'm gonna hit it, and then, right when you slow up, everyone knows that your boat does this, and it creates a bigger wake. So the area downriver, or immediately upriver from this area, potentially get more waves from people taking off, or getting on a plane, or slowing down and coming off a plane. I myself, I think the two-hundred, six-hundred-foot rule is a good rule, definitely not, does need ed, education. There's no doubt about that.
Better enforcement. I mean, why make?
I'm not prepared to ask them to create another regulation that they're not going to enforce until we can get them to enforce what we have.
Well, this is a study, right?
Yep.
I was gonna, study. So, i, is, is there any possibility that the study finds the same thing that we've been talking about all evening, is that there's a higher need for more regulation and, and more monitoring?
It could.
And would that do us justice in our request to the county to get additional funds to put another craft on the water down here?
It very well could.
Is that, is that too far of a stretch? 'Cause that's, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah. Um, I, they're, they're gonna, I, I believe they are gonna do the study regardless how we vote on this. But, and, and I think that's going to be a, a big thing, and in that meeting I had with them, so, I mean, I, I, I told my personal views, it's all about enforcement, and, and signage. Um, I'm not gonna tell Elginac what to do, but if I were them, I would probably put about six or eight buoys out there along that area, two-hundred-and-ten feet offshore. And so you know if someone goes inside, you know, you can write them a ticket. 'Cause that, you know, the sheriff, they have a issue, well, we can't really prove if they're two-hundred feet off or not, and, you know, then.
Write them a ticket and let them prove it.
Well, yeah.
That's what they always tell me.
Exactly.
Not that I've had any tickets.
The sheriffs have a rangefinder on the boat.
Right.
That's not an accuracy.
I know. Well, they, it, it's not real accurate of a rangefinder.
Yes, it is, it's a significant improvement.
Yeah, well, I've, I've talked to them, that was what they told me. Um, and that rangefinder won't hit, it won't hit the dock, it will just hit seawall, it won't hit the dock, and it's two-hundred feet from the docks, too, so.
Well, is it gonna cost us anything to, for the DNR to do this study at all?
No, it won't cost us anything. If, if we did vote for it and did go ahead and do it, there would be some cost to us as far as additional signage, which, you know, that's not a big deal. I mean, we, we do no-wake signs already.
Well, Chris hit on my original question about, is it a yes or no, are they gonna make recommendations?
Yeah, you know what?
I like what Chris said, as far as.
Yeah, I, I really don't know how that.
And then if we do get that recommendation as far as enforcement, where's it gonna go?
Right.
And is it gonna be implemented?
Mm-hmm. Well, that's, it's out of our hands.
Yeah.
Like I say, that's a, a county issue. Um, everyone knows I tried to get more money for enforcement for, for the county.
Shut down.
I mean, I went down, went to the state, I even, you know, contacted our senators, contacted emergency manager, uh, to get more enforcement money. I went everywhere I could think of, and it, I was, I was unable to get more money allocated this year for it.
I mean, I, the city of Elginac sent us this resolution because it's the same one they passed, and the DNR had asked them to have us consider it, but I probably would have felt more comfortable if it was just a wake study in general, or just a water wake study, but it specifically says no-wake study, so without the DNR here to.
Right.
Kind of expound and answer some of the questions that we've brought up, specifically Christie, I mean, you had some great points. I just, I, I don't even want to mess with it at this time, so, I mean, if they want to bring it back to us with some more information, that would go more towards helping us gain more enforcement out there, I'd be happy to entertain it personally.
And.
Agreed.
And I, I kinda told them, too, I, I don't have a problem if we have temporary high water of doing something for a year or two, but I thought it would be kinda ludicrous, you know, this is, this isn't a permanent problem, water goes up, water goes down.
Well, does anybody remember from eighty-one to ninety, was there a enforcement out there? I know we had a high-water coalition at that point in time, but I don't know if it impacted the, the wake area out here that we're talking about now.
Early nineties, it was all no-wake.
Yeah.
It was because of high water, too.
Yeah, we, we, there was all no-wake for, because we had, you know, high water.
Sure, right.
And, you know, if we got a temporary problem, I'm not so, I'm not opposed to that, but if the water drops three feet, and, and you're still forcing everyone to go slow in a no-wake area, you know, I do have a little bit of a problem with that. Then what will happen, it won't get enforced, then the water goes back up, then you start enforcing it, and that's, that's a whole different issue. It's like, you know, why weren't you enforcing it three years ago type thing, so.
I would personally rather see us work on enforcement than no-wake.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree also.
Okay, should we call it to order?
Yes.
So there's a, a motion to reject the, uh, resolution for the DNR to conduct a no-wake study. And we have motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton, yes. Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Fraschard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, last we have on the agenda, um, the police department request to replace some bulletproof vests. Hi, Mike.
Well, as you see there, we are required by contract, in union contract, to replace our bulletproof vests every five years. Along with that comes that manufacturer only here at DZ for five years. So, one kinda coincides with the other there. Last time we replaced our vest was March of two thousand and twelve, so that's where we're sitting right now. With that comes a grant through the Office of Justice, which it did apply for that grant. We've always gotten it in the past, and I don't see any reason why we didn't this year, however, we did budget just in case. But that, as far as the awardment of the grant, we won't know anything, I'm being told right now until I got the voters.
I, in our budget, we budget twenty-two thousand for the replacement of the vest, it comes to eighteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five, and where are we looking to?
Some more vests that would be purchased after the fact with this, too.
Right. What are we looking at, probably getting about seventy-five hundred dollars back for this grant?
A little over.
So, yeah, if it comes, comes to be, so.
I'll make a motion.
You'll see with our vests this year, we did, we changed things up a little bit, as you're seeing with, with all the new modern carriers and that that are coming out. You know, and wearing the vest for, for twenty years myself, it can be quite cumbersome, and get quite uncomfortable. Now, the vests themselves have come a long way, and have become thinner and lighter. We did try to go with, we shopped it out, and went with pretty much the lightest one we could find, as well as we gave the officers the option of an external carrier opposed to an internal carrier. The external carrier is something that, you know, if, if, say they get out there, they work on something for a while, they get overheated and that, it's easy to come in here, take that thing off, and cool down for a couple minutes, that, and you're a lot more agile in that as well. I can tell you, I would much rather than wearing that. You'll see with our officers, it pretty much matches the color of their uniforms, and that's a kinda blends right there. But they look pretty good, and the biggest thing is that it's gonna be a lot more comfortable for our officers, and a lot more comfortable, so, I know myself, I'd much rather be wearing that.
They offer the same degree of protection as the, everyone?
Yep, everybody.
Okay.
What do we do with the older ones?
Uh, overall, generally what we'll do is, and what I've been looking into with that is, we're gonna take and donate more to the police academy. That way, what it does, it allows the cadets to wear these things, and they get an idea of, you know, what it's like wearing that vest every day. So there's nothing else we can really do. So there's nothing else we can really do with them, so that's what we had to do, ship them over there.
Can we take one, see if it still works?
Run that down there.
Can you hang one in your office?
I had one vest that was fifteen years old, and it stopped everything just fine.
Okay. You weren't wearing it, were you?
I wasn't trying to...
Okay. All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the police department to purchase new bulletproof vests for eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Line item two oh seven, zero zero zero, nine seven one.
Support. Yeah, motion of support. Any more discussion or questions for the chief? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Can I chime in on one other thing?
Yeah.
You know, we're talking about the high water and everything going on right now. You know, myself, you know, I worked in Marine Division back in the early nineties when we were dealing with this, myself and Gary. I mean, so it's nothing new to us. But one thing I want to say, you know, in all fairness to the Sheriff's Department, is you've got so much area and so little to go around.
Yeah.
No different than what we are. You're covering a lot of square miles out there, and you don't have a lot of vessels out there to try to cover. As soon as you get to this area, somebody else is calling from this area, and wherever you go. Now, Gary, you were going, trying to get more funds and everything, and it... Obviously, that's the way to go, and that's where it needs to go. And hopefully, somebody's gonna be able to get it right here, and someone's gonna listen and throw some money down towards this.
Yeah.
Because my personal opinion is, you can make as many no wakes as you want, but if you don't have the people there in...
You need a flashing light out there.
It's not gonna do you any good. We need to put more bodies out there in order to do that. They need to get some more funding. I mean, let's face it. The water goes up, it's a new problem that you're dealing with, and you gotta try to throw the resources at it, and that's the only way you're gonna kind of...
I personally think that we, like, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we need a boat out there every day, which we don't get.
Is it night, or is it morning?
Is it?
I'm on call.
Okay. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we need two boats, just for here, not, you know, from St. Clair South, just for our area. We have a hundred and forty miles of coastland in our township. That's what FEMA did a study on all the islands. Clay Township has a hundred and forty miles of coast with all the different islands and stuff.
What do you think about it? They can't give us enough boats down here to cover it.
Oh, I know it, it's, yeah.
They really...
Right. To do it right, you need three or four, you know?
Absolutely.
So, and, you know, it's an issue, too, and, you know, thank God, we haven't had an issue, but, you know, we have, every weekend out in the bay, you know, we have a fifteen-hundred, two-thousand boats in Muskmoot, and same at, you know, Strawberry Island, all the other islands, you know? We really don't have a lot of, you know...
You know, if we didn't have this high water going the way that it's going, we wouldn't be discussing this issue right now.
Right.
I mean, they would be able to pinpoint, you know, the areas that needed to be addressed.
Yeah.
Where now, it's a blanket.
Yeah.
It's across the board, so...
Yep.
In all fairness to them, I know...
Oh, yeah, it's tough.
We're in the same position, so we know.
I mean, there's limited resources, so it just needs to be... Need more resources, that's for sure. All right, thanks. We still have our resolution out there for the funding the garbage. Emterah's not here. Let's see, Gary. We can postpone it to our next meeting. Yep, so I will make a motion that we postpone resolution two thousand and seven... Or twenty seventeen, twenty-six to our next meeting.
Support.
Because I don't want... I personally want to hear from them. So we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. Next thing we have is board member comments. How you doing down there, Mark?
Oh, pretty good.
Good.
Spent the last three days over on Harson's Island turkey shooting, and I had to go to Corvus to buy one, but, you know... So it was a good turnout over there, and I enjoyed myself immensely. And that's about it.
Thank you.
I'm next, Emma.
Yes, you are.
I was away for about three weeks on vacation, and I want to commend the chief coach and the police department for keeping an eye out on my place, and even Chief Rose went down there one time, looking and around, and I really appreciate that because of the area that I live in. But other than that, I'm glad to be back and see that everybody was doing their job.
Cindy?
Oh, I just want to thank everybody that came out to the public hearing. It's hard when all the decisions are put on the board, and we have a hearing, and nobody shows up, so... It's nice to help base your decisions off of other folks' opinions as well as your own. On that, we got an election coming up in November. Always looking for help. If you're interested, contact the clerk's office.
Okay, Sandy?
Welcome back, Joanne.
Thank you.
Just wanted to remind everyone that school is back in session, so to watch for school buses and the little tykes walking around. Speaking of the little guys, the safety tykes coming up on September sixteenth, I know my child is excited for, so I hope we have a good turnout for that. The light on the top of the Colony Tower, I was able to spot that sucker from out in the snide this weekend.
I haven't seen it from water yet.
I saw it.
It's pretty...
It was cool, I liked it.
Good. I want to say, I gotta get over the Clinton River, because it should shine all the way to Clinton River.
Well, if it's warm enough, I'd love to go out there.
Yeah, okay.
And thanks, everyone, for coming out to the public hearing.
Cool, thank you, Chris.
Elginak Clay Rotary Club has a golf outing along with Clay Township Police Department this Friday, rattle run and nine o'clock shotgun start. Chief, are there any more spots open?
Yep.
We got a couple spots open. I'd encourage you to get ahold of the Elginak Rotary Club, or you can contact me at sealregan2012@gmail.com. I'll put you in touch with the right people. Thank you for the ten folks that came out and gave their opinions today. It's fun when the public perception lines up with my own perception, and that's kinda cool. When I... It doesn't always go that way, but that was pretty neat. Congratulations, the Elginak football team. They knocked off Almont last week, and it was the fifth straight time they've done so. And they're gearing up and preparing for Emily City this week, seven o'clock game in Emily City. So go Muskets.
Great, thank you. Christie?
And our eighth graders start tomorrow, so we're excited for that. We're ramping up for the end of summer tax collection, so September fourteenth.
That's, September fourteenth is D-Day?
That's D-Day, yes.
T-Day for tax day. Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? Yeah, school is open, so stop for the red flashing lights on the bus. And yeah, if anyone needs anything on the golf outing, I'm a member of Rotary, you can get ahold of me, we'll get you... We can sneak them in last minute, probably, huh?
I signed up today.
All right. Good for you, thank you. Yeah.
Well, yeah. A lot. Can I get off first?